CB, where's the hoodie?
I had to get space heater out. So it warmed up down here finally. Okay, gang, we are live on streaming, so behave accordingly. That's a pretty tall order for this group. We're still missing a few, right? I had to get adult supervision to get this started.
I closed curtains so I wouldn't scare Ronnie.
All here, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Called order to start the workshop this evening on, what is the date? May 11th, 2020. And we'll start with the number two item, 2021 budget.
And I believe we're going to go into a couple of presentations and a lot of data tonight. Please keep this interactive. So at any point that you have questions or want some other information, let us know. Lance is going to go through first the capital improvement plan. And this is going to be those large purchases that all across the city, departmental as well as road projects that we have specifically on tap for next year. But we'll get a little bit into what the longer term plans are for those purchases as well. And then Donna will go through the tenure trends of revenues and expenditures. And we'll spend a little bit of time on the many funds that make up City of Andover. And so that you can kind of see a little bit better, more detail of where the money can come from. I think Troy made a comment at one of the most recent meetings where he said, you know, sometimes there's money that we can pull from. And so we'll just pull back that curtain and show you guys where all of those funds might be. And talk a little bit about the things that are already committed for some of those funds. So you see those balances every month in the financials. But it doesn't mean that that money is all just sitting there waiting to be spent. Some of it's already got plans through CIP planning and other items. So with that, Lance, do you want to kick us off? And I think you're muted, Lance.
What about now? You guys can probably hear me now, can't you? So yeah, let me share that screen again real quick. Okay, so you should hear me and you should see my screen, right?
Yes.
Good, good start. All right, Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. So first, we'll start with the capital improvement program. The City of Andover uses a five-year planning horizon for its CIP. When we're talking about capital improvements, we're talking about expenditures over $5,000 of depreciable assets. So this can be buying new things, building new things, but also maintaining existing things. So that's kind of the backdrop of what the capital improvement plan is in a nutshell. What I'd like to do is just kind of give you a high level overview of the entire five-year plan. And then we'll kind of get into what is actually being programmed for the 2021 budget year. Throughout, when your departments present their budgets over the next couple of months, they'll detail more specifics about the individual capital improvement projects. This just kind of gives you a high level overview and an introduction to those projects that you'll hear more about. And again, the purpose of this is to make sure that we're planning out for our capital purchases, not only from an asset management perspective, make sure we're taking care of the thing of our assets, but also to make sure that we're tying that to our operating budgets to make sure that we're managing those assets in a way or within our financial means. Oh, if I can switch. So for the five-year total, and this is a living document, so we add projects, remove projects, things come up, things get postponed. But at this specific moment in time, this snapshot, this for this five years, our capital improvement program totals $39.1 million. And here you can see it broken down each year. So for 2021, our current budget draft includes $8.16 million in capital purchases or capital expenditures, I should say. And at any point, feel, interrupt me if you've got a question as we go through this. So we classify our capital improvement expenditures by operational category to see where this money is and where these capital investments are being allocated to. As you can see from this, our primary capital drivers currently are street-related projects, wastewater-related projects. There's a lot of infrastructure that we currently maintain and build. A fire has a lot of equipment as well, as you guys know. And then you have smaller operational categories that have, that are a little less intensive when it comes to our capital planning. So here you can see it broken down by percentage. And again, this is for the entire five years. And then over on the right in the table form, you can see exactly how much money those percentages work out to be over those five years. So then we also classify our capital projects or our capital expenditures by the project category to see again, another way of slicing this to run analysis on what types of investments we're making. So we break these down by projects, which I'll kind of come back to in a second, studies. So these are studies that we do to inform capital purchasing or capital expenditures. So this could be master plan studies or drainage studies or things of that nature. Vehicles, so we know exactly how much we're spending on vehicle replacement or repair, equipment, and then facilities. So the projects is kind of a catch-all category. If it's not clearly a facility, not clearly a vehicle, it'll get allocated to projects. So an example of this would be like new fishing piers on Lake George, things of that nature. So then we look at the project types as well. So this is really useful when we're trying to communicate how much money we spend on new equipment or new infrastructure versus how much we're currently spending on maintaining infrastructure, existing infrastructure. So here you'll see there's a large, a majority is on either new, new projects per se or enhancing current things. This could be widening, widening the streets. The numbers here do include about 6.5 million of that 40 million total is for a fire station. So that's really bringing up the new category, in addition to some of the roads that we have plans. But in the Andover Community Center, which you guys probably saw on your project list. So this changes, these percentages change all the time, depending on what's included in that five-year plan. As Donna will get into a lot of detail here in a second, the city has a diverse array of funding sources to fund these capital projects. Everything from, so on what you see here, debt issuances, obviously issuance of new debts to cover project expenses. Again, this number is pretty inflated here. Almost half of it is for our station again, so that's a, that definitely, and that's what we have in the CIP currently. Funding sources change all the time as we get closer to these projects actually happening. A large 33% of our capital expenditures are paid from, from our one cent sales tax. Those are street-related projects. And then you see proprietary funds, which are our utility funds mainly. So funds generated by user fees. And then special funds is also that about 20% are funded via special fund. These are funds again, which Dawn will explain more during her portion. But our funds whose revenue sources are dedicated, for example, the park improvement fund, which it, majority of its revenue comes from alcohol tax, fireworks permits and the like. So here you can see the breakdown of what, what type of, what type of revenue was funding our capital purchases. And then here, you guys, this was included in your packets, but this is a list of all 2021 projects that are currently in or in the current draft of the 2021 budget. I can highlight a couple as we go, but I'm not going to go through each one of these line by line unless you guys really, really want me to. But on this first page, you'll see that there's a system master plan for 2021, which we're due for our next 10-year park system master plan. On this page, we budget roughly around $2 million a year on street maintenance. You can see that in here. We've got the York Parkway Phase Two Streetscape. So what we're currently working on that Streetscape master plan that we've got money budgeted in there, then some other related street projects. And some other purchases here where you see a lot of street, a lot of wastewater projects that just maintaining our current infrastructure are getting, you know, the wastewater utility, what they need to keep providing their service. So I'll open it up to any questions that you guys may have. That's a, we covered $40 million in about seven minutes. So if you got some questions, feel free to ask.
Hey Lance, I didn't see, I didn't see the fire station in here. Did I miss it? Oh, I guess that's, this is for 2021, never mind.
Yeah, so you, yeah, you're right.
And that is why we've got a peak in, I think, is it 23?
Yeah, so that's currently scheduled for 2023. So yeah, that 13 million for that year, six and a half million of that is a new fire station.
Did we ever look at the property and get a price for the fire station on Minnehaw and End Up Road?
I know Chief and Les have been working on that a little bit in the, in our Corona times. So I'll let them give an update.
Yeah, so the price is online, not saying that would be the price they would offer us. But what we, rather than look at the price, what we have done is look at how the building would fit. And to do that, we engaged the architects. We actually got back a draft drawing that was fairly interesting. It was a bit of a, it's not a redesign. They smudged things around a little bit. That's an architectural term, by the way. And they were able to make the building fit at the north end of the lot. And then at the south end of the lot, there actually ended up being space for expansion. I would hear that as space for a little bit of a pocket park, which is what I've heard very desirable south of 54. So it is possible to make it work. And Jenny and I are supposed to be meeting unless either in this month or next month to go over all of that stuff to get some direction again.
What was the acreage on that little piece? It was more than three, I know that.
Yeah, it's not four, it's more than three, three, it's either three, four, or three, seven.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Lance, were you wanting to go through any of these supplemental charts? Or were those, like that was more just background information if they wanted it?
Just background information if you guys want it. I mean, I'm glad to go over each and every one of those charts and graphs if you want.
Sorry, I did have a question. What kind of acreage is the fire department really on right now? I mean, I know it's kind of split between the two, but.
Gosh, you know, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. The building's about 12,000 square feet. I don't know, it's a goofy shaped lot, which is, makes it really interesting. But I'm sorry, I don't have an acreage for what it's on.
The chief's target acreage was three.
Yeah, for the new station, we were talking about three. That would give us enough room for now and enough room for expansion if it were needed later.
Any more questions?
Fire station is currently 1.7 acres, the lot that it's on.
Thank you.
Okay, if no other questions about CIP, then I'll let Donna go ahead and talk about tenure trends, revenues, expenditures, and go through some of the slides she's put together there for you. Lance, if you want to go ahead and share, that'd be great.
He'd love to.
He would love to, and he is. All right, this is a lot of numbers, as you can tell. It's every revenue source for the last 10 years and where we've been. It's just kind of presented to you as just kind of a, it really hasn't grown, or yes, it has. One thing that I do, one number I want to point out is down under licenses, permits, and fees. About halfway through, you'll notice building permits, big jump. Now, yes, we did have a lot of building permits last year, but this was also our first year of the new schedule for fees, which is something we've been needing to do for a few years. So that's why that number is looking rather large. If anybody.
So moving forward, Donna, is that number going to be, you know, for 20, you know, moving this year forward? Is that going to be around that same, same price or?
I'm hoping it all depends upon the number of building permits. When we get to a slide a little bit later, I'll show you what the year-to-date is. And we kind of see that. So unless anybody has any questions on these particular pages. Lance, if you'll go to the one where it shows the percentages for receipts. There we go. This is just, again, the last 10 years. You'll notice really that the total from taxes has actually gone down. And part of that is, you know, the building permits have gone up quite a bit. They went from like a 2% up to almost 10% of our revenue source. Everything else stays kind of in the same ballpark. Right now, franchise fees have gone down a little bit as far as this percentage of the total, but their total amount is still going up year by year. If you have the next screen, please. This is where you'll see what the 2019 actual, if you go licenses, permits, and fees, fourth one down, so far for the year, we've collected over $260,000. Oh, excuse me, that's the budget. We've collected 105. So we've collected 40% of the budget already. And I have no reason to believe that we won't collect at least the entire budget. It's hard to predict. How many, if you have a commercial building permit come through, the schools helped with last year's as well, the building permits on those. We've collected of our taxes, we've collected 54.9%. We're real anxiously awaiting to get that second half payment in June to see where we're at. We do know that there are several commercial properties that have not yet paid their second half. And there's one rather large one that has not paid their first half either. So we're just kind of holding our breath and seeing what happens on those. Any questions about revenue?
So on the recreation, seriously, baseball, softball fees come up with pretty much almost half?
At this point, because we haven't had the basketball season yet. I mean, that's really the only sport that we've collected it for this point.
But baseball and softball is absolutely our bread and butter.
It is, yeah, it's the driving force behind it.
Hundreds of kids compared to tens of kids in the other programs.
But the way the recreation programs are set up, if they don't bring the revenue in, they don't, also don't get expended. There's not supposed to expend more than than what they bring in. It's always nice when they bring in a little bit more than they expend, but we don't count on that. Yeah, expenses, kind of the same thing as earlier, the 10 years. There's really no big red herring out there. I mean, it's all, everything kind of stays similar.
What was in 2017 for general admission for 3.2 million?
Well, that's the total of all those items. And you'll notice the transfers, that was where we were collecting sales tax and then transferring over to the debt service fund. Service fund can't receive the sales tax, the general fund had to, and then we transferred over. So yeah, that's why those numbers are big. We are now done paying for the items that the sales tax was for, so that will go away.
And Donna, is it correct, are some of our transfers that are showing for 19 was for the burial of the lines?
No, none of that, that was all debt service in 19.
And that's what were those items for?
Pardon?
What were those items for?
That was the fire truck, the park restrooms.
Okay.
What else was in that sales tax issue?
That was still.
The street shop. All of those items were in there. We'll go ahead and move on. We'll get to where we showed the 10-year for this percentage out of the general fund, one more screen, there we go. Shows you, and I backed out so that it would, it's not misrepresented. I backed out the sales tax receipts for bond payments, and I took out the tran, so those transfers are out of there. So it's actually operating expenses now. We added a position in the general fund. That's why that went up a little bit. You know, again, everything kind of stays very steady, no big jumps as far as the percentage of the total amount spent. Then we get into fund balances. Those are all the fund balances we have out there. You'll notice where it says funds 31 through 47, capital projects. Those are the funds involved with the new developments, Prairie Creek, Cornerstone. Those are all the funds that I use to keep track of all of those projects. So that is not money we have to spend willy-nilly. If you go onto the next screen, we'll kind of go through uses and sources. We've already done the general fund. Where'd it go? There we go. Special Highway Fund Two. That revenue is from state and county tax. This tax is calculated on the gallon, not on the price. We don't know how we're going to be affected yet. I'm sure it will go down with the stay-at-home order. But until we get the next payment, we won't know that. And the fund is used primarily to pay for the upkeep, upkeep and the equipment used to upkeep the city's streets, snow removal, pothole, street sweeping, et cetera. We charge a very small portion of this to payroll to this fund. It's about $50,000 of payroll goes to this. Other than that, it's truly for the gravel, the salt, all of those items. Employee benefit, benefits, excuse me, the revenues from mill levy and motor vehicle taxes. And these are truly what it says it is, employee benefit expenses except for wastewater, stormwater, trash, and water, since those are enterprise funds. They handle their own. In addition, the fire district's portion of the employee benefits are not in here either, just the city's portion of the fire department. Special Building Fund, again, mill levy, motor vehicle. And there's also a transfer from Park Improvement Fund are the revenue sources. And this is all of the payments of the principal and interest on PVC bonds. The gazebo is now, is going to be paid off in 2021, which is just $5,000, a little over five and a half annually. And the amphitheater, the final payment will be in 2032, which is about $110,000 annually. Those are what the park improvement pays for. The police station debt service is covered by the mill levy and the motor vehicle taxes. That final payment's in 2024, and it is an escalating debt service. It starts out in 2020 at 259,000, goes all the way up to 307,000. We would have loved to have been able to at some point refinance this bond. But unfortunately, when it was set up so that we could get a better interest rate, because it was a pretty interesting time back then, it had to be set up so that 100% of the bond owners had to agree to refinancing. With the interest rate they're getting, that was never going to happen. Fire District, again, there's a mill levy for those residents outside the city limits. We calculate that budget and the expenses are a pro-rata portion. Hotel and tourism, also known as CVB, is the bed tax. We receive those in the months listed there, January, April, July, and October. And the expenses are for bringing, purpose of bringing visitors to the city. We have the hotel voucher program with the hospitals, they give out vouchers, and we reimburse the hotels $40 for those night stays. The Fund 13 is the impact and sales tax. It actually has three subsections, the park impact, the street improvement, and the street impact. Park impact is on every new home that's built. There's a $675 impact fee charged. We also, in 2019, the park department had a capital budget of about $400,000 that was going to be used to build new bathrooms in the park. That was decided that wasn't necessary, and now that money is going to be used to cover the cost of the golf course management over the next few years. At the end of March, we budget very conservatively because we never know what's going to happen. So by the end of March, we've already collected 100% of the revenue that was budgeted for the year. So we're in good standing there. We use this a lot of times for additional expenses for the Red Bud Trail. And again, beginning in 2020, the annual management of the city golf course. The sales tax piece is this collection of the city's one cent sales tax. And we don't know yet where we're at on that because payments are two months behind. The money we got in in April was from February sales. So we'll know a little bit more in May when we get our payment, which is at the end of the month. That'll be March sales. It may even be going up because of everybody buying toilet paper. and, you know, Clorox wipes. Annual street maintenance is paid out of this fund. It also pays for the city's portion of new road construction.
Donna, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a statement on the sales tax. Just so everyone on the council is aware that there's always talk, this level of modifying the sales tax for groceries. And that could have a pretty significant impact on us as a city. Um, if that were to change. I don't recall how much of our sales tax comes in because of Dylan's, but I believe it's pretty high. So just something to be aware of. Sorry, Donna.
That's okay. And you do have to pay attention each time they bring it up because sometimes they're, and most of the time they're just talking about the state portion, which is that 6.5%. Um, but you're right, Troy. It's something to pay absolute attention to because they, you know, that would be a fund that we would not want to get swept in. Dylan's is very likely our primary source.
And I think from what we've discussed with the city attorney in the past, we could home rule where we could say, we still want our sales tax. But that would be, you know, politically correct? I don't know. But we do have that option. We also pay for, smaller projects are paid out of cash on hand and larger projects are bonded, and then the debt service is paid out of this fund. Street impact is that $865 that's added on to new home, every new home. And at the end of March, again, we've also collected 100% of our anticipated revenue. So even if home sales were, home building were to be drop off to zero, we were clearly collected all of our revenue for the year.
I will speak up real quick, Donna. Like this arterial impact fund is where the Harry and Andover Road Light that you all have approved, that's where that will get paid out of. So just those are the types of things that might come out of there as you're thinking about projects.
Yeah, it tends to be smaller projects. All right, on we go. Library, we're, it's just a pass through. Historically, the city gives, has three mills that are dedicated to the library. And then whatever that collection is, we pass it directly over to the library. They also will present a budget to the council. Um, debt service, it's from mill levy, motor vehicle, payment specials, transfers from other funds.
Sorry, Donna, I've got a question on the library. Do they lease the land or is it bought or how does that?
Technically, the city owns that land if I'm correct, Jenny. Um, but no, we do not charge them. Back in the day when we were over at the old city hall and they were at the old library for a while, when I first started here, I think we charged them a dollar a year. It was some silly amount just to say that we did. And it was more a hassle to do the paperwork than it was to collect it. So it was done away with. But no, they do not pay us any rent. They pay their own utility bills. They pay their own insurance. They cover all their own expenses. Our parks crew does mow their area.
If they're want, sorry Jenny, if I cut you off, but, so if they're wanting to expand, where does that fall? Who? Whom? Does Tom talk to Jenny?
Well, what I was going to say is one part of the, um, when they built their building, that was built with a sales tax. But the other part of that was fundraising that the library and the friends of the library did. Um, and it was relatively significant, the amount that they fundraised. Donna, you may recall how much they raised.
I would say it was at least half the cost.
It was a good portion. So I would expect that we would, you know, look at a similar setup for any kind of expansion of facility that they'd have where they would need to, you know, fundraise whatever amount we all think makes sense. And then we, you know, bond the remainder of the project, or that would be one of those opportunities to go to the public for a sales tax because that's certainly something that generally your public would get behind. They're pretty supportive of the library. It gets a lot of usage, you know, on a per capita basis compared to a lot of community libraries.
Who owns the library building then? Do we own it as a city?
Yes.
Okay. So if the roof caved in, we would be responsible for fixing it.
They pay the insurance portion, but I mean, ultimately, if they didn't have the money, we wouldn't want it. That's our asset.
Right, okay.
Um, debt service, the specials, we always anticipate a 5% delinquency rate on specials. We, it doesn't normally come in about that high because if it's on, if it's in a development that doesn't have houses on it yet, there's a letter of credit. So if the developer chooses not to pay their specials, we can pull it from their letter of credit, which we've done in years past. We haven't had to do it since 18, 17?
I think 18, but it was very few. 17 was the, it's been a couple of years since we've had to do a long, large draw.
Um, and expenses accounted this fund are purely just the principal and interest payments. Other than the bonds that are used to, the, like were issued to bury the power lines or a fire truck and the city serve some infrastructure, the balances for special assessments on properties. Oh, wastewater utility, um, we haven't seen a large increase in unpaid charges. We're watching it though. Um, like I said, right now, everybody seems to still be paying their bills. Some smaller revenue streams, and we're talking very small revenue streams, are the sale of gray water to the Flint Hills Golf Course. We have grain sales off the land that's just to the north of the plant there. Um, that a local farmer rents and we get, share the profit from the sale. And then we also have cell tower, which is around $800, $900 a month that we collect in revenue for the cell tower that's at the wastewater plant. Um, in addition to the regular expenses, there's also a $250,000 transfer to the general fund. Um, that was something Mark Deter started. And then we also transfer around $750,000 to the wastewater expansion fund. Trash and recycling.
Hey Donna, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but why, why, why is the transfers? Why did Deter start that?
We were one of the few cities that didn't transfer money from the utility funds into the general fund as a means of revenue stream. Uh, most cities transfer that have electric or gas like Augusta. They have, you know, their electricity. They transfer a portion of that into the general fund. It's just a way to help offset some of the costs in the general fund.
What, I guess what did we do prior to Mark starting that? Did we just have a huge balance in that number 20 fund then?
Um, we, that was around the time that we started increasing the rates for the future expansion. So there was maybe a little bit larger of a balance being built up in there, but we were transferring, you know, quite a bit of money to the reserves as well for the future expansion. And it didn't start out at 250,000. It's, it started, I think, at 175,000 and it's over the last couple of years worked up to 250. Uh, on the trash and recycling, out of every charge, everybody that has recycling, we keep 50 cents of that money and 45 cents of the trash charge. That's to cover the city's expenses for printing the bills and the personnel to process them, to take all the calls for people moving in and out and changing services. The, we have to show 100% of the bill as revenue, even though the bulk of it gets sent back to waste connections, we have to show that as an expense. That's why it looks like it has a huge expense in that fund. It's just their portion of the billing. Wastewater expansion. In addition to the money that we transfer from the wastewater fund, the sewer tap fees on all new constructions, both residential and commercial, um, go into this fund as well. Um, we've got several projects ready planned. There's a 1.5 billion sewer line extension down at 159th Street. That's going to serve the middle large schools that's coming out of there. Um, we are, we're already doing debt service for an earlier sewer interceptor line. We do not have to budget this fund by law. Any reserve funds don't have to be budgeted. Um, but we normally do, just so the council knows what we're anticipating coming out of there. Stormwater fund is exclusively from service charges, except for a couple of times we've collected fines from people that screwed up. Um, and the expenses cover not only some employee costs, but also water testing and education programs of schools.
Screwed up how so?
Pardon?
How'd they screw up?
They, they did not have the correct screening for water runoff. Um, so, and, and they're given a warning, and if they don't correct it, um, then we fine them. They're not huge fines.
I, I would add, I think it's twice and.
Yeah, two or three times max, yeah.
There's a lot of warnings go out. Our main objective is try to get compliance before we go that route.
Okay.
When you say water runoff, would it be water runoff into like neighbors' property or something else?
So correctly, what it is, is a failure to control sediment from running off or tracking from the construction site. It's related to construction sites almost, almost 100% of the time. And, you know, if you drive back to your side, you'll see what they call a road control fence or wattles or round log looking things that go around the perimeter. And the objective is, is to slow the water down and let it leak through and drop out the sediment so it doesn't enter into the pond streams and creeks.
It's a little knee-high screen that you see all over the place. What, what is the combined, uh, could I use a different trash service than the, than the one Andover recommends? But what's the combined sewer bill?
Right now, if, if you have sewers, well, because there's sewer, stormwater, trash and recycling, the total bill is around $53 and change. I can quote you the exact amount of the trash if you need it.
Now, the reason I was asking is mine's like, I don't know, 30 bucks or something crazy. And, and that'd be more benefit, it'd be easier on me if it was every three months. But 150 bucks every three months might be hard for somebody else to come up with. That's why I asked. At the end of the day, everything's about me. You know this.
We used to have quarterly bills. We switched to monthly when we started doing the trash and recycling and when we increased the sewer rates because we had heard from some people that, we, we felt that, um, the bill would be a little large if we still did it quarterly.
Now, Rodney, you can do like what I do and pay it three months anyway, and they, you know, don't like you, but, and just get paid a late fee.
We do have some customers that are actually on an annual billing. You can send it for an annual billing. We send you a bill in January, you pay it, you don't hear from us again.
Yeah, I did that for a handful of years till my boy got sick, then I didn't. But I might start doing that again because it is more convenient for me.
So we also can ACH bills so that you don't have to actually do anything. It just comes out on the same day every month. So that's another option. And the public should be aware of that too, because that's one less thing to have to think about.
And it's really nice since the bill is the same amount month after month. It's not like you're going, oh, how much came out this month? It's always the same amount.
Right.
Um, okay, we get into the reserve funds. Fund 110. That never, that seems to be the bottomless pit, some people think, but it's not. Um, the only revenue stream for this is primarily transfers from the general fund. Um, we have had the, one large influx of money several years ago was when we, um, sold some property. But it's rare that we have anything other than coming from the general fund. Um, expenses are varied. We plan on the purchase. Once we can buy the Llewellyn property, that will come out of there. Um, the upcoming, updated, the comprehensive plan will be at least partially funded by the admin reserve. Purchase of any, our share of the purchasing equipment for the golf course are charged here. It, it, this is where we tend to have to go when people say, find a place to fund this. But again, at certain point, it's not going to be there to fund it because we don't have money to transfer into it from the general fund. We're kind of sunk.
And to put, to perspective on that, that land purchase is 200 and the balance you see on your sheet a few slides up is 312. So that's going to be a significant, significant portion of that fund balance. And then the study will be on top of that. So, um, just good perspective.
And then I just kind of grouped the rest of the fund balances together. Primarily, as departments have money at the end of the year, we try to budget for a transfer. Sometimes if they've held expenses in other areas, we might transfer a little more. If they've had unexpected expenses, maybe we don't transfer as much. Um, we try to use it for future purchases. For example, the fire department is purchasing one of their vehicles from the reserves in 2019. Um, we've bought large street department purchases when they build up the reserve enough. We can, and there's not many ways to pay for it. We tried to save up enough in reserve. So we need a new street sweeper. We've got the money for it. So some of them may look like they have healthy balances, but there's a reason for it. We're, we're, it's our savings account so we can, you know, replace equipment as it needs it. Um, fund 140 park improvements. The three main sources of revenue are fireworks tents permits, cell tower rental and alcohol tax. Um, we don't, I don't know where we're at with, whether we've received anything or how fireworks is going to work this year. So, you know, that's about 35, 40,000 in the budget that hopefully will be coming in. Currently, for a permit, um, a vendor pays us $10,000, of which 7,500 is our revenue. The other 2,500 is held and we use it to offset our cost for the employees that work the park, at 13th Street Park or for the cleanup. Um, and they usually get most of that back, you know. In the, back in the day when we didn't have as many people with tents, we used more of it, but we've held down expenses and they get most of that 2,500 back.
Correct me if I'm not wrong, Donna, but that, that money to pay those employees are not paying our staff. It's, we go through like a Boy Scout group and stuff.
It, well, it, it goes to pay the fire department reservist or the part-time firefighters that are out there. There's occasional policemen that are out there for safety of the patrons. Um, those, those salaries are paid out of this and their benefits. Um, but they've cut down the number of hours that they have people out there. Um, but yes, it pays for the Boy Scouts when they clean up all of that leftover trash that's out there. Um, if there's tent inspections, if there's a cost for the tent inspections, that comes out of there. Um, we don't know, cell tower rents still come in on a regular basis. The primary expense for this fund is the debt service, as I mentioned earlier. And it's also used for purchasing replacement playground equipment. Um, in 2020, there's money in the budget for a restroom at the Red Bud Trailhead. Hopefully, we're going to get a grant, maybe, keeping our fingers crossed, and we won't need all of that. The fund 911 is basically E911. The only revenue source is the E91, 911 tax that's charged on people's phone lines. This is a very regulated account. Becky Tapia does a great job of filing her annual reports. There's only certain expenses that are allowed to come in of here. We cannot charge personnel to this. It is primarily the, the phone lines that are used for, for them and a little bit of equipment.
But not the accreditation?
No, 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 no. I mean, we couldn't, originally we had charged one of the phones that's on the Red Bud Trail, uh, the 911 phone to here, and they came back and slapped our hands and said, no, reimburse your 911 fund. That doesn't come out of here. So one would have thought that was a good use of it, but evidently not.
Donna, on that 911 fee, how does that work with the county and their 911? Do we have to split that or is this just a Andover-only fee?
I don't know how that is split. But that's, that's at a higher level than me at the state that calculates that.
Okay. So the state just pays us what they think we, they, we owe or they owe us?
Yep.
Okay.
All the 911 fees, we, we collect the money or the money is sent to us from the 911 phone lines in Andover. The county gets their share of the money from the lines outside of Andover.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
I think it's smart to know though that, um, we do as, as citizens pay for 911 service through the county. And we also pay in addition the 911 service here in Andover. And in the past, that's been a point of, you know, question or discussion of what to do about it, whether it be to somehow, you know, work with the county to try to not pay them because we're double, doubling it up or figure something else out. So at some point, we'll probably have that discussion again, since we have a lot of new, uh, people on the council and the new mayor. But just do know that we, we double pay for 911 service.
We essentially pay for two services, correct? Is that what you're saying, Troy?
That's my understanding, yes. Even though we only get one service, yeah.
And I can tell you a little story on that. And I can tell you a little story on that. I was in an automobile accident a week ago Saturday. And after two hours, I called nine one one back and said, uh, we're leaving. And they had called me about three times while we're sitting there and the lady, I couldn't believe she said it, probably one of the stupidest things I've ever heard in my life. Is uh no one showed up because we're having jurisdictional here's, somebody said, issues. And I'm thinking, you gotta be freaking kidding me. You know what I mean?
Where was it at Ronnie?
Hundred and forty-third street, a hundred yards off Kellogg.
Yeah, that's Cedric County, isn't it? That's uh between Wichita and Cedric County.
I give because neither one of them showed up.
Yeah.
That's my point, you know, so I don't know how the jurisdiction lines uh start and end so. But it's, but it's just something I, I personally uh, I couldn't believe, you know, I'm thinking, you know, good thing no one's bleeding out, you know what I mean? Cause they're talking about who and who is not going to show up, you know, so eventually I just, I called them back and, I mean, they called me at least twice. And the last time they said, well, if anything changes, let us know. And I'm thinking, what in God's name is going to change? My car is stuck in the middle of the street and uh I ain't walking, you know what I mean? So just, just as, just a story to put out there. Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could on that, um in reference to the um comments about paying twice for the same service, that's, that's not a hundred percent accurate. That every person in the county pays county taxes and that money goes to the county and then they pay for their services. Um, you know, in, in, in that idea, we also pay for the sheriff's department. But the sheriff doesn't patrol the city of Andover typically. They assist us. Uh, but the county pays for all those services and we pay a share. But it's not necessarily specific for the nine one one center. And then, and then there's, one of these days, we really do need to have this conversation because there are a lot of other pieces that go into that. Uh, the staff that we have, that staff are, that are, are dispatchers are also our records clerks. Uh, they staff our station. I mean, so we, we use them for multiple things. So there, there's a little bit more to it than just um paying the nine one one funds. Um, if we were to lose our nine one one center, those nine one one funds would end up going to the county as well. So I mean, there's a, there's a several pieces involved in that, that uh sometime we can have a uh discussion, a workshop and, and we can go through all of that and lay it all on the table. So on, so chief on Harry Street, there is an addition that's on the on the um south side of Harry, there'll be one addition that is in the city limits and the addition right next to it is not in the city limits. If you get a call from them, who answers the call if you're? The systems are set up so that if the call comes from a, the home that's in the Sedwick County um area, then it normally goes right to not, the Sedwick County nine one one. Likewise, uh for us, there are occasions where the system isn't perfect. There are occasions where our nine one one center will pick, uh receive a call from a, from a caller. Uh, sometimes on cell phones, when they hit a tower, um, the tower directs it to the nearest nine one one center, but sometimes it makes mistakes. The uh, if we get a call, if our nine one one center receives a call that is designed for Sedwick County nine one one or for the Butler County nine one one, basically it's a hit of a button and it's transferred to that nine one one center. And likewise, the other way around, uh if they receive one that goes to Andover, um, they, you know, the dispatcher will say, uh, stand by, I'm transferring your call and they connect a button a, and the call is transferred automatically. I'm, I guess I'm speaking specifically the east side of, of Andover Road or Butler Road, what, whatever your flavor is. That's where there is, some are in and some are out of this city limits. But in fact, there's one addition, if I'm not mistaken, that's in between two additions that are in the city limits. And they are not. So that's my question. How do we, how do we decide who we're not going to serve and who we are going to serve as far as that particular situation? The only reason I know that is because I, I went door to door out there and, and I was checking because obviously I didn't want to go uh fifty houses that didn't get a vote for me, obviously, right? Well, I, I think that the, if I answered your question correctly, the bottom line is if they're in the city limits of Andover, then their nine one one tax money goes to our nine one one center. And their phone numbers when they call nine one one will go to ours. And our police department will respond to their uh calls. And uh likewise, if, if it's not in, if it's in the county, then the sheriff's department would respond to it. It depends on what the council annexes into the city. They automatically become our jurisdiction. And kind of like what you were talking about where Wichita and Sedwick County was trying to figure out what jurisdiction you were in for your accident. Um, it, it's the same thing here. We, we have a pretty good understanding and working relationship and our officers and our deputies know what's in the county and what's in the city.
Okay. So chief, if, you know, let's say Ronnie's accident was at a hundred and fifty-ninth and Kellogg, who responds to that? I mean, is it just based on which side of a hundred and fifty-ninth it's on or?
Actually, you, you picked a perfect intersection for this discussion because it depends on what quadrant of that intersection you're in. Uh, the south, southwest quadrant is in Sedwick County. The northwest quadrant is in Wichita. The southeast quadrant is in Butler County, I believe. And the, the northeast quadrant is Andover. So um to answer your question, it depends on where the point of uh um, impact is, the POI of the accident, what quadrant that is, is what jurisdiction will work it. That's the legal answer. But in reality, it depends, a lot of times the highway patrol will come in and work it. Our officers will work it. I mean, we all work together and we're doing the same thing. So uh but legally, it depends on whether, what, what, what jurisdiction it falls in.
So we don't have juris, we don't have jurisdiction on that southeast, southeast quadrant?
Um, I believe that's a county.
Is that county right there? Okay.
On the road.
Um, I don't have anything else as far as, I think that was my last slide. Um, if anybody has any questions and if you're looking over this when you can't sleep at night and go, hmm, I wonder why this is, drop me an email, give me a call and we'll talk about it.
Donna, I have one quick question. I, you know, if you, if you win the lottery tomorrow and say, screw y'all, I'm going to Jamaica or whatever. Is, I mean, like you said, you know, s- s- street wants to put a, you know, we're saving that money for a new street sweeper. Is the, Rick, do you have that somewhere? Is that written down somewhere? Do we have a, you know, plan that we want to use this reserve fund for? Is it just all in your head, Donna?
No, it's, we build the fund up and then as equipment is needed, we say, okay, do we have enough in reserve? It's not saying it's specifically for a street sweeper. It's not specifically for a snowplow. It's let's keep building the money up and we know we'll need it for something.
Okay.
Something, things age, they need to be replaced.
Right, right, okay.
And I am going to go buy a lottery ticket now.
Um, related to budget, I sent you all an email um today with the schedule of presentations that will take us through um first meeting in August, which is when you'll adopt the budget. So there's a lot of time between now and then that will have a lot of presentations. But did anybody have questions about the budget in general or that schedule or anything of that nature?
Where does benefits for the employee, city employees fall under?
Fund three is employee benefits. With the exception, like I said, for the wastewater, stormwater, trash and water, those funds how to pay for their own benefits because they're enterprise funds. But everybody else falls into fund three.
Thank you.
Okay, we good? I'm sorry?
Yes, I think we're done with this item unless there's questions.
Number three, reopening the city-owned facilities, three point one.
Okay, um, I would like to propose instead of doing um, kind of what we did two weeks ago, which was have a plan and then wait until Thursday at six thirty to get a press conference and then change the plan because of what that press conference said. I would like to propose we go ahead and bring back the employees to the office on Monday, May eighteenth. Regardless of if the governor says we've moved to phase two or not. Um, having been up here the entire time and if you look at backdrops, you can tell several um of the staff are and actually a couple of city council members are meeting in city offices tonight. You know, we've got twenty-seven thousand square feet here and less than twenty employees. So I think if we can go into restaurants, um, we've got masks for everybody. We've got thermometers, touchless thermometers that will require everyone to take their temperature when they come in. I feel like we could go ahead and start our transition back so that we've got a date and people who are needing to find daycare and help in that regard have more than a day or a weekend's notice if we tell them on a Thursday night or a Friday morning. Okay, it's phase two on Monday, so we'll see ya. Um, I prefer to just go ahead and tell them if you don't mind tomorrow that yes, we will be back on Monday the eighteenth. We will work, um as I said, in our various communications with those employees who have daycare, childcare issues that it's going to be a pinch point for um employers all across the country. Um, we will work with those who are sick. We don't want them here. And so um supervisors have been communicated with emphatically, if you've got someone who you even hear is saying, I don't feel well, or they're coughing or they've got symptoms, you know, we need to know that and they need to go. Um, so if everybody's comfortable with that, I'd like to move forward with the employees coming back Monday. And then go ahead and wait for phase three to be announced to open up those public spaces, the lobbies again. I think that gives the employees a little bit of a transition period, which really changes all about those transition uncomfortable periods. Um, give them a couple of weeks to get comfortable with the idea of coming back to work and then go ahead and open up the buildings. Um, very likely June first, but depending on what those health metrics say. Um, May twenty-sixth would be our first council meeting back in chambers. You had a public hearing that night, which could be done over Zoom, but I think will be more equitable. Um, if done in person. And I think that kind of gives us a good point, of course, assuming nothing has gone super sideways on the health side of this. Um, gives us a good kind of fainting point in terms of opening the building back up and having those meetings in person. So I entertain any comments, questions, concerns on any of that.
I'm ready to go to phase three and four.
Yep, I'm with Mike.
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with you Jenny, whatever, whatever you want on that.
Okay. All right, well then, um, I think I heard at least four voices, voiced that they were fine with that. So we'll move forward there and communicate with employees. And then the other big question mark related to city events is amphitheater events and your event director Katie Cork is on the call tonight. So I think she's got some.
Hey Jenny, do you want to talk about the playground? You put on the very bottom, you want to talk about the playground. Do you want to talk about that first?
Yes, no, that's a good point. I'm really glad you pointed that out. I would have caught that later and been like, oh. The playgrounds are a kind of um, a point where I kind of want some guidance on that because um, having your employees here, who you are paying to process city business, I think is one thing. Um, opening up a playground and saying, like, oh, it's all better. Come on kids. You know, that's kind of something else. Um, the league has been clear on their phone calls that they don't think we should just open it up and do nothing, that that would arguably be negligent, um negligent act, which is one of the areas of tort that we can have a claim against us. So they said, you know, do something, whether it's putting out hand sanitizer at the playground. You can say you're going to sanitize. I think I put in quotes something about disinfecting because if anyone who's spent any time on a playground knows that just as soon as one child's gone out and played on it, it needs disinfected again. They lick their hands, they lick surfaces, they put their hands in other places. There's just all kinds of mess going on on a playground and there's a lot of surfaces to wipe down. Um, trying to imagine what that looks like from a staffing point of view, you would basically just have a staff person on constant rotation between the playgrounds. Um, and all they would do is clean. And unless you wanted them here from sunup till sundown, there would still be periods of time where there's not someone cleaning those. So I'm not sure how feasible that one is. They even said putting up signage that says something about not being regularly disinfected or disinfected once a week. Um, use at your own risk. Obviously the kid may or may not comprehend the signage, but hopefully they've got a guardian or a parent there with them. So thoughts on how eager we are to reopen playgrounds if we feel like that's a phase three? Cause we are in phase one. I hope I didn't confuse that. We are in phase one still of the governor's plan. Phase two anticipated the eighteenth, phase three anticipated June one. Phase four um is the phase out, which would be the fifteenth. And we're pretty unclear on what Hermann's Gathering's definition will be at that point, if anything.
I would say at the very least, that should wait until phase two, in my opinion. Um, I wouldn't be comfortable opening those any earlier than we're going to open anything else, um, like our non-essential businesses and things like that. And then maybe that gives us a little time to figure out how reasonable it is for us to do some sort of disinfecting. I don't think we're probably going to be able to have somebody there constantly, but maybe gives us a little time to come up with a plan that maybe workable.
If Homer can't get a haircut, we shouldn't have the parks.
Two is the eighteen, right Jenny?
What's that?
Phase two is the eighteenth, right?
And that is the proposed plan, yes. She, um, I will say, I felt like that's gotten backpedaled a little bit in the last few days that there's been a stress of like, um, cities do not plan on your sports starting May eighteenth. That is the planned date, but it's not a definite date. Don't be communicating that you're starting your sport on May eighteenth. So I don't know if I'm reading into that or not.
No, Jenny, I'm with you. I, I got that feeling at least on the Friday's call. She kind of seemed a little, you know, like she was backpedaling a little bit, you know, about that. But I personally believe that if she doesn't open stuff up by the eighteenth, the whole, the whole state's going to start, you know, revolting, so.
Yeah, I, I think we should open it up and you know, if you want to put a sign out there, put one, but uh, you know, about maintenance and cleaning and whatever, but I think, I think we should open it up.
So the reason why she backpedaled was because the dates are really irrelevant. They're hopeful dates. All of it is based on milestones. So really, there are zero dates. It is milestones based off of whatever they're talking about uh, uh, with testing and that kind of thing. So the date, the reason why she backpedaled is because then people were starting to say, oh, okay, we're just going to open on that date. And if you're following her guideline, and I'm not saying that we do, but I'm just saying if you are, there are no dates. It's only milestones. So the dates are hopeful but irrelevant really.
So Troy, what do you say about the uh playgrounds then?
Oh, you're asking my opinion on opening? Well, I'm in a constant battle with this whole thing in my head and I assume everyone probably is too. Because I, I think it's utterly uh crazy, some of the stuff that we're doing and some of the businesses we're not allowing to open. And the ones that we are, I think it's really ridiculous. So I, I guess it would come down to me of, of kind of going off Shelby a little bit too, would be um, asking the simple question, how can we do what we want to do but still be safe doing it? And I think that's where Shelby was saying, hey, let's pause for a minute so that we could come up with a method of trying to either sanitize or do a couple of steps that would help it be uh safer. Um, we're doing that with our family, by the way, with absolutely everything we do. And we're not trying to be just stupid. You know, like, you know, we're going to go out in a hazmat suit or anything, but like, for example, my son's got a couple of friends over right now. But they're in the garage with the door open with tables where there's still several feet, feet apart. So it's, it's like, if we're going to open some things, then the question is how do we, how do we do it safely, right? I mean, so if we want to open it all tomorrow, why not? As long as we've thought out what's appropriate. So my opinion would be, um, we pause until we have a plan. Right? I mean, we could just say, oh, let's open it and, you know, whoever gets sick, gets sick. That's one way of thinking. That's not mine though. My way of thinking would be more. My way of thinking would be more, let's think about the community and what they expect us as council members and mayors and the city to do for them. Where we're in the position that we're in now. And again, my opinion would be pause, make a plan, follow the plan that we want to follow, um, without, with, with being reasonable. I am, I mean, on, on its face, I don't think it's reasonable to station a city employee there at the park with wipes and wipe down the thing every few minutes as children play. I, I, I feel like I couldn't support that. I would support, I would support education. Whether it be signage or um, or something to that effect. Uh, when, when we are a little bit more comfortable with um, of how we're handling things, but I know, that's where I, did I answer your question, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm on the same page with as far as education, maybe with some signage. I know at the beginning of this, Rick had mentioned a five hundred gallon tank for uh hand sanitizer. I hope we could have maybe a smaller um, size apparatus at the parks to at least offer some kind of hand sanitation. Um, you know, do, and then on the education, you know, you don't have to wear a mask, but it is advised. You know, still right now, it, it, you know, it helps protect, so.
I think, I think that if we are going, if we feel that it's too unsafe, that we need to put hand sanitizer out there. And then I think we would be irresponsible to open it. First thing is you have to figure out a way to secure the hand sanitizer because people will take it. I know we think we live in Andover and that don't happen, but that's insanity at its finest. People are people. If I'm not comfortable enough to say, hey, your kids can slide down this slide. But the, the next, we have to have some may stand there wiping down the handles for them to go up there. I think that would be irresponsible on a couple of levels. One, it's saying that we're not sure that it's safe for you to be out here. And number two, we, we, and we have to ask JT, but I think we'd be setting ourselves up for, for liabilities. Um, the, you know, kids get out there and all, all we need is to be on channel ten. And Andover had a cluster deal because they took down the fences in their dag gum park too early. Uh, so it's, it's a fine line, but we have to think about uh, the consequences that, that could follow, you know.
But yet my child and me can go stroll through Dylan's and be, you know, in the same aisle of twenty people. You know, I think, I think that's where a lot of people's frustrations lie. I can go to Walmart and do that, but yet I can't come play on this playground here at Central Park because, oh my God, my, you know, I may get the, the virus.
Well, when you go in the Dylan's and Lowe's and Home Depot, uh Menards, they all, they all have sanit, hand sanitizer as soon as you walk in.
They do.
Uh, every one of them are wiping down carts. So if we're, if we're going on that, then, then maybe everything should be, should be shut down. Um, but obviously, we're not going on that. We gotta use a little common sense. And uh, and come up with that plan of what is sensible. Uh, I, you know, I think the hand sanitizer is a, probably a, a decent idea with some uh signage. Uh, at each one of our small parks and put it out there, I mean.
Rick, do we have any kind of apparatuses that we could adapt for that?
I suspect we could probably make something that we would strap or something hand sanitizer to. Uh, we're probably gonna have to have a quad load because I imagine some of them will disappear. Um, and I'm, I haven't checked any grocery stores and all those places that, uh, they're catching up on hand sanitizer. But they're still having a hard time stocking it. It's gonna disappear faster from our park, um, quite frankly. And, and I, and I, I do want to say, I'm not overly confident we could do an adequate job completely sanitize in a playground. There's just so many touch surfaces on there. We can try to fog it or some method like that, but it would be very hard to, to get it to a point where I would feel comfortable telling somebody it's been sanitized for their use anyway. So I think at a minimum, if you open it up, I think signage would be something to let people know that there is a, an issue with this, being able to completely sanitize it for their protection.
I, I seen on TV where they were spraying down an airport with a spray, pump up spray. What would they be spraying in that?
Well, I would defer to the name of it to Mr. Russell, but we've been talking about it and, and uh, but I think we have one of those devices in our city arsenal. So, you know, we do have one of those. I forget the name of the chemical, but it's a, it's a aerosol, well, not aerosol base. It's liquid that you aerosol spray it out more or less. Fog it.
CDC, CDC has a list of uh chemicals that are approved for COVID virus. And the one that we use in EMS and fires called Virx. V I R U uh, E X, Fire X two, two fifty six. Uh, but there are other chemicals out there that are uh, even peroxide based. Um, some fire departments are using peroxide based solutions.
So I, I will agree that I think phase two would probably be the best time. Um, I just feel that we need to get it open and I mean signage. That's just my opinion, though.
Phase two being Monday, next Monday?
Being, you know, when they decide when that milestone is.
Right, I think it's all is gonna be just based on um, kind of how kind of our best efforts on how it looks as far as if things are getting better or worse. Um, I definitely, now hearing from Rick that he's not confident we could successfully um sanitize those areas just with as many as there are, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of us waiting until we have something more solid. Just, I don't know that, to me, signage, I think that takes some liability off of us, but I don't know that that's going to be super effective in people um, following the signage. Once those open up, I'm sure those parks are gonna be swarmed with parents and with all the kids that have not been able to get out of the house.
But if we say that, then no, no businesses can open.
That's nonsensical, man. We've been doing it the whole time. There is no secure, no more solo solitary place than a sun tanning bed. And there's a lady in town in big trouble for opening her sun tanning. And that's the most private setting you can have. So that you can't compare uh apples and oranges. I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. You can't compare our city parks to Dylan's and, and Walmart. You have a choice whether you take your kids to, you have a choice. You, you have a choice whether you can take your kids to Dylan's. You, you know, so, but we have to look at the city side of it. If Dylan's gets sued, it ain't my problem. If the city of Andover gets sued, it's my problem. And you gotta ask yourself, is it worth it to wait two more weeks to phase three, so we know, have more information? And personally, I, I would have never shut them, but it ain't up to me. It's up to, it's up to the governor, you know, she made that call. So, so you have to use sense and, and to compare to the other things is just nonsensical.
So I think maybe I'm hearing phase three, but we need to be ready. So that would give us time, potentially two and a half weeks, potentially more, to come up with a plan that we feel like shows effort, which is really, I think, what we can do. I mean, I think that's what's realistic. I think to think that a playground that's touched by people, I think I put in the memo that don't have the best hygiene habits. To think that we're going to be disinfected for that is not realistic, but that we could put our best efforts forward two and a half weeks or longer, depending on the health metrics of the phases. Is that reasonable?
Homer agrees.
Greg agrees.
I agree.
And I'm on the fence with it, so I guess it's fine.
That, and that'll give us time to come up with some signage on what those, that message could and should be. Purchase materials, get them out, things like that. That'll give us a little, I'll give Rick some time to kind of plan there.
Yeah, I think at some point, some of us are gonna think, what the heck are we doing? Are we just gonna shut this dang thing down for the rest of the year? And that's not appropriate either. Because at some point, the American citizen is responsible for themselves. And we can't just say, oh, we might be sued because we left a playground. No. The people themselves have to be responsible at some point. I'm sure that's what Mike Warrington's thinking. Yes. Face. So two weeks, fine, we can wait two weeks, but holy crap, guys, we can't wait a year. And we ain't gonna get over this until there's a cure. And we all know it's, it's not anywhere near the horizon, so. What are we gonna do? You know, I mean, are we gonna just shut everything down for the rest of the? No, we're not. I'm sorry, I'm just speaking now because I, I'm sure everyone's on their own you know, wavelength of where they think that we should do or what we should do. And I am absolutely not okay with the government telling everyone to sit in your house for the next year.
Now, now I wanna make, I wanna make it very, I wanna make something very clear. I have been arguing with city, the subject county about opening our racetrack that I have killed myself working in all winter long, seven days a week. So I, I sympathize. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm, I'm, you know, but I'm saying as a city, as, and I think, I think we could open them tomorrow, but I, do I think it's the smartest thing for the city to do? No.
Well, and I think there's two things we're talking about here. I think there's the legal liability, which I feel like what we're hearing from attorneys at the league and, and what JT's kind of guided us in the past in terms of the limit of tort claims act on government is that, you know, that's a concern. And so there's things we can do to help reduce that. But then I think, um, maybe the mayor was referring a little bit more to the public relations aspect of this and and what risk are we willing to take in that regard? Sure, a cluster could occur in one of these private businesses and that is that on them. But do we want that cluster to be on the Central Park playground? Or are we comfortable now that the risk is low enough that we're ready to take that gamble? I think those are kind of the, the risk rewards that we're looking at.
We have, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say it leads well into the next conversation um, about the amphitheater event unless we need to talk more about playground. Because I think there's a lot more room for thoughts on this topic as we get into the next one. So, um, Katie, do you want to walk us through?
And, and I want to make sure before we move on, I value all of your opinion. And we have to make this decision together. It's not my decision. We have to make it together. But mind you, when we make that decision, we own that decision. See what I'm saying? So I'm not looking out for me. I'm looking out for all of us to really think it through and say, hey. Uh, at the end of the day, no matter how we go, if, if, if it's, if it's four to two, I'm all in, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure we know the decision we make, we own it. You know, so I, I value y'all's opinion. I don't mean, mean to come off as I don't. That's just furthest thing from the truth, all right?
I agree. And, and where I, I try to come from myself would be that we as a free society get to make our own choices as much as possible. And I never want to myself be the person that says, I'm sorry, I know so much better than you. You have to do it this way. You can't go out of your home. You can't do anything that I don't tell you, prescribe for you because I just know better for whatever. I see that as a very elitist thing. I don't think we've ever done that in Andover, honestly. And even with what we're doing now, I don't think we are. And with this discussion, I think it's a great discussion to have. Um, and it really is interesting, the time we're in. Um, I don't want to kill anyone either, you know? But at the end of the day, I also want people to realize they live in America, not in Venezuela or China or Europe or whatever. We get to make our choices for things. And if we make a choice that kills us, that's our choice. I know.
It, it bothers me as a mayor of the community that, that I can't open our barber shops, you know what I mean? Uh, because I don't think it's right. You know, they've been trained to, you know, I need a barber bad.
I mean, I, sorry, I, I always laugh when you say that, just because.
But it does bother me because I'm telling somebody that has a business, I can't let you open your business, you know? And they've been trained as well as anybody else on, on sterilization and all that stuff, you know, so. Make no mistake, I'm not a fan of, of, of uh shutting things down. To sit, to say the least. If I could say what I really thought, uh, I'd be on the ten o'clock news and we'd all be in trouble.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well.
I had brought up the plan earlier, and I guess that's another thing. And, and we're not the governor, so we can't make that decision, but I feel like every place that wants to open, whether it be the barber shop or Wendy's or whatever, um, it would be appropriate for every one of them to have a plan, whether it's brought upon by their industries, because most industries have been working on that now and or the individual location to say, okay, you know, Plaza Barbers, what is your absolute plan to stay safe? And if they present it and it's workable, let them open. Don't just nonchalantly as a big group say to the entire industry, you can't open. I don't agree with that at all. I understand we sheltered in place because a bomb blew up with this pandemic, but we're past that now. We're several months past that now, and they're not using their head anymore. I feel like they're just, I just don't think they are. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'll quit venting now.
Troy, I completely agree with you.
One hundred percent, yep.
Could I get you to call Cedric County, Troy?
I would be happy to. I, I work with them, actually. That would be fine.
Hmm, all right, onward and upward, man. We'll never solve the world's problems tonight, but nor mine. We've got many of them.
Uh, we can always try, right?
Yeah, Katie, floor is yours, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. Um, so like Jenny said, this was a pretty good transition into um, events this year, um, as pretty much all of our events take place in Central Park. Um, so, um, Jenny Lance and I met um, last week um, to talk about um, mainly the concerts. And before I get into more details, I just want to remind everybody, we haven't announced the artists, so we're gonna just save the artists, um, because we don't want to say that in a public meeting when we haven't announced it yet. So, um, while some of you do know who we're looking at, we're just gonna keep that um, on the DL. Um, so, um, mainly we talked about um, one, whether or not we want to move forward. Um, and I put together some, some budget scenarios. But before I get into that, I, I do want to say, while the financial aspect is definitely something we're looking at and something that, that is important, it's not the only factor um, that goes into our concert. So, um, you know, the logistics of planning a major event take months. Um, it's, it's not something we can do in a matter of weeks um, on a, on a normal basis. And then, you know, when you add in the social distancing aspects and um, the new, new plans of things like disinfecting um, areas and all of that, it takes a little bit more um, to do as well. So, um, in the past, we've at, at least since we've had the amphitheaters the past couple of years, we've never um, had a show that wasn't announced in less than two or three months from the um, date. And so, you know, when we're looking at an August show, if we don't want to announce until we're in phase three or phase out area, we're pushing right up against that um, two month thing for an August show, um, if we're not gonna announce till, you know, middle of June. Um, which is doable, um, but it does present a little bit of a a challenge in getting the marketing out about the show and things like that, as well as the planning it takes. I, I have a lot of the basic logistics in place. Um, but by all means, I don't have all of them in place. Um, and things like, you know, if we did an event and where we needed to be doing social distancing, things like our food court, our beer sales would need to be adjusted, uh, because that's, those are the areas where people congregate. Um, in, you know, keeping people six feet apart is gonna make those lines really long. Um, and we may not even be able to have more than one or two vendors, um, which is gonna make the lines really long again. Um, or maybe we don't have food or beer sales. Those, those are all things to talk about. Um, and we can go through that in our scenarios in a minute. But that's just something to keep in mind. Um, Jenny, I also taught, or and Lance and I also talked about, you know, we bring in portable restrooms. Um, so, you know, on a regular day, portable restrooms aren't the most hygienic. Um, but when you bring in a large event, you know, a thousand, two thousand people and they're all using these portable restrooms. You know, how are we looking at that from a sanitation standpoint, from a? You know, are we gonna have someone go in and sanitize all of the restrooms every fifteen minutes, every hour, something like that? So that we don't have a cluster or anything like that. Um, you know, we typically get special event insurance for things like this, but. Given this current situation, obviously, um COVID nineteen is a preexisting condition. So that's not covered in any of our insurance policies. Um, it's just blatantly excluded. So um if for some reason we did have a cluster and someone, you know, wanted to come back and said, I got COVID at the park, so I'm gonna sue the city. We can't cover that with our insurance. Um, at least not our special insurance. And I doubt we can cover that with. Our general liability, um, given the situation. But again, that's all some things um to consider, but. We did put together um about four different scenarios um from budget standpoint and um Lance has this up on the screen for you guys. So. I'm just gonna walk through it. And if you guys have any questions at any time, butt in and then. Afterwards, we can have a general discussion as well about everybody's thoughts on. Uh, mainly the concerts, um, but obviously we do things like greater Andover days and movies and all of that stuff too. So. Um, scenario one um would be, we don't have either concert in August or October. And we wouldn't get our cap fed funding. Um, that would be in a discussion with with cap fed. No sponsorships, um, no artists or marketing costs, no concert costs. But we do have some fixed costs for the amphitheater. Um, wifi in the park part of um that comes from the amphitheater. And then um we have music licenses for the city that also comes from the amphitheater fund. So we're looking at. Um, sixteen thousand for that, which we would supplement from the CBB. Um, they have that in their budget to. Offset um. Any shortfall in the amphitheater up to seventy five thousand. So that's scenario one. That's sort of a, you know, I don't want to say best case scenario, but that's sort of the best case scenario we've put together in this. Um. Presentation. So the second scenario would be, um, we have the October concert. Um, we would keep one third of the funding for cap fed because we were planning on having three and we only had one. Um, and then we keep all of the sponsorships we've had committed so far, which is about twenty thousand to date. Um, and we would adjust those benefits and things for everybody, all of our sponsors. Um. Expense wise, we would have um our artist fees, marketing for the concerts and then. As you can see, other concert expenses, that's like security, um, labor, uh, temporary restrooms, um. Lots of different thing, you know, bus transportation from the parking lot, so anything you can think of. Um, in that regard. Um, so we're thinking about forty five thousand for that. And of course, the wifi and the music license as well. Um, so that puts us at um. Hundred and forty three thousand um for expenses. So we would offset um what we don't already get from the cap fed and the. Um, ticket revenue, that's what the concert says. We, we're guessing about thirty thousand in ticket revenue and then. Twenty two fifty to cover sales tax. Um, which we charge to the um, to the patrons. Um, given that, we would spend basically all of our cap or all of our CBB. Uh, well, not, not all of it, but a good majority of it, sixty, uh, sixty six thousand. From CBB to offset that. So we're, both of those scenarios would come out breaking even. Um, and then scenario three would be if we planned to have the October concert. But we ended up canceling it because. We didn't know what was happening. We had another spike. The governor said we ought to close it all down or whatever happens from that. Um, then we would not get cap fed funding again. That's discussions we'll have with cap fed. Um, but the assumption is we're not having a concert, so we're not going to get that money. Um, we wouldn't get any tickets to our money. We wouldn't take any of the sponsorship money we have committed. Um, again, because there's no concert. Um, and that'll be all discussions we have with everybody, but in this scenario, we don't get anything. We'd have to pay the artist's fee in that um, in that case. And the marketing we would have already spent. Um, potentially all of it, depending on when we cancel it. Um, at that point, we don't have a lot of other concert expenses except the insurance. Um, which the quote we got is about about five thousand per concert. Um. Then, of course, we'd still pay wifi and and music license. So given that the expenses would total about a hundred thousand. And if we exhausted our CBB funding, we'd be about thirty thousand in the hole. Um. Which is something we've done in the past. Um, you can see that on the next, next page. Um, if you're looking at your packet, but. We can go to that in a minute, but um. That's somewhere we've operated in the past before. Um, so that's something we've definitely. Had to deal with in the past, um, but it's not ideal. Um, and then, of course, the last scenario um would be if we decided to have both concerts, August and October. And then we had to cancel both of them. Um, this is the worst case scenario pretty much. Um, again, no, no ticket revenue. No cap that funding, no sponsorships, just the CBB funding. We've committed a hundred and twenty five thousand to these artists at that point, um, with the signed contracts and all of that. Marketing expenses. All the, um, we wouldn't have any of the other concert expenses except insurance. So that'd be twice as much insurance. Wifi and music license. So we're looking at a hundred and eighty three thousand for expenses. Minus the seventy five thousand, that's a hundred and eight in whole. If, if, if that happened. We can't cover that through our festivals budget. Um, we'd have to pull from the general fund for that. I don't know how much is in the general fund to pay for that. Um, Jenny or Lance would know more about that, but. Um, that's the worst case scenario. Obviously. We're not recommending that. Um. I was, they, we could recommend scenario one, one, two, or. Potentially three. Um, Lance, if you'll go to the next screen. Um, you can see that in the past, um. We have um operated, we've, we've operated basically in the hole on all of our concerts since we've had concerts. Before the amphitheater, the CBB. Was able to offset. Those costs. And then in twenty eighteen, um, the CBB. Only, uh, we were only in the black because the CBB basically. Took double of what we had budgeted, um, and pretty much exhausted most of their budget on the amphitheater that year. Um, but last year we operated at about a thirty thousand dollar deficit, which um I believe we picked up through the festivals fund. Um, and we have enough in the festivals fund this year to cover it, but. It's not gonna last forever. Um, and, and again, um, if, you know, for some reason we end up not doing. Greater Andover days or something like that. We're not going to get as much into the festivals fund this year. So that affects future years of the fund. Uh, and all of that. So, um. Jenny and Lance have more on the more like how much from general fund and all of that we could. Potentially do, but. Again, not recommending doing the two and having potentially to cancel it. So. Um, the main, obviously, we're going to discuss all of this, but the main. Thing I think for tonight that we want to have a definite answer on is the artist's show. Um, and then a plan for the rest of the year.
And just to give some perspective, um, thank you very much, Katie. That festivals fund does have just over fifty thousand dollars in it. Um. And the idea of the festivals fund, pre amphitheater being aligned in there was to always have enough to basically cover a GAD. In case you have, like we did last year, a Saturday that is essentially a rain out, because then you're not going to sell the carnival ticket. Um, and so. You kind of want enough money in there that you could handle one year of really down festival um revenues. So, you know, you. On like a twenty eight thousand dollars, you you could absorb that and still have a balance in there to help offset GAD losses. A hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna have to go somewhere else for that money. Not only would you exhaust that fund. Um, you would still have some outstanding and we don't have a plan today for where that. Money would come from, but that would be, you know, the kind of money we're looking to go find somewhere else. In a year where revenues are very likely down in many areas.
Katie, have we signed, we have signed the contracts for both August or October?
We have not signed any of the contracts. Um, we have, um, they've been issued to us. Um, and um JT has reviewed one of them and he's reviewing the other two right now. But we have not signed any of them.
I mean, ob- obviously, the October one, I I think we should do. The, the August ones, I'm, you know, it's kind of. Teetering on, but uh, I don't see why we couldn't. Do it. Uh, so if we did both August and October. Where would, would, would we still be at zero? After all expenses and revenues? Because I, I don't think we're showing that one, right?
Katie's not showing you if you have two successful concerts. That's correct. She is not showing you. And to be honest, I don't know that we know what that looks like because. Um, as we've talked about the phase out. I think the issue that's a little different here from the last conversation we had is now we're talking about mass gatherings. And we have not been told what a mass gathering is allowed to be. What, um. I think she referenced this in her memo. Um, I sat, and I know I did, I think in my last packet, um, memo was that. The health directors for the eight area counties met a couple of weeks ago and I sat in on that. The Cedric County Health, um, Health Director said point blank. She never would have thought a week or two prior, she would have been saying. That the community would be opening up. When it did, that that was not the health department's recommendation, but that was um the pressure of primarily the Greater Wichita Chamber of Commerce. Um, that said, she was not going to recommend a mass gathering of over two hundred and fifty in Cedric County for all of twenty twenty. And the, all the other county health directors nobody blanched at that. So I'm not going to be shocked. If part of this phase out means that there's a limit on the mass gathering part where. It makes it very difficult for those members to work.
Right, because fi- I mean, financially speaking. You know, a thousand, two thousand people is, is pretty much the lowest we can go to. I mean. That thirty thousand in ticket sales is about twelve hundred GA tickets. Um, so. Anything less than a thousand people really doesn't make financial sense for us to put on the show, um, because we're gonna lose. Lose money just from a ticket sales standpoint. Um, and I will say, you know. Ticket sales aren't, of course, aren't our only source of revenue, but they are a good portion of it. Um, ticket sales and sponsors, sponsorship are really. The bread and butter there. Um, and then we get some from food vendors. And beer sales. Um, but that, that really just helps us cover some other expenses.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a hundred percent good on the October one. I think, uh, we, we, that's a long time from now. Um, and August, is that mid-August?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we're, we're right at three months away.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Friday will be three months because we're looking at um August fifteenth, I think.
I thought, or August eighth. Be more early August, but.
Yeah, August eighth, sorry.
That's one that would be kind of pushing. I like the October, but the one in August might be a little, uh, might be a little soon.
Yeah, I'm com- I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with October. Um. I don't know that we should hedge our bets and commit to both and pot- potentially be at that hundred and eight thousand dollar. Deficit. Um, but I think October is good, but I don't know that we should commit to the August one and um sign that particular contract. I just don't see it being something that we're able to get enough people in to.
Oh, it's more apt to.
Well, i- i- if you knew who the uh, the artist was, uh, you probably, you probably could get a pretty good, uh, um. Amount of people at that one. Because that one would be a pretty good concert, un- unless we can push it back further.
Oh, it's more apt to rear its ugly head, though, in October and have us shut down. That's, that's one thing to think about, and I'm not opposed to having it in October. And, but the last I heard is that uh, any venues over two thousand are not gonna be able to. Over two thousand will not be able to open up. And even then. Uh, they're talking about fifty percent capacity. So by mandate. Uh, a thousand is, is all we're gonna get.
Well, isn't the fifty percent capacity starting on uh, May eighteenth, phase two portion?
I don't think we know what mass gatherings look like. I've, I've been through the plan several times and it does not. Define what a phase out mass gathering looks like. I mean, it's. I think everyone's head was a little on swivel Thursday night. It's possible that the phase out plan is. You're all open to your own devices, do whatever you will. Uh, I do, I wish so much I could recall my source, but I don't. Um, I was told that the wave venue in Wichita is not planning on having shows the rest of twenty twenty. So I, I know there are venues in our area. That are feeling like there will be limitations. That may make the numbers not work. And I, I think that's why it's kind of a two-pronged conversation. A lot of communities, I'm really grateful we don't have a swimming pool right now. But a lot of cities are having this conversation on. Swimming pools are generally losers on finances. So if you know you have this amenity that you're gonna lose money on. And now you're gonna have to compress your season to. Four weeks or whatever it's gonna be like, at what point does it simply not make sense to fill up the swimming pool and hire the lifeguards? And so. It's much that same conversation. It's kind of like, there's the. Can we do it? Will we be able to do it? Which is one conversation we'll probably have to revisit in the months leading up to October. But then there's also the, you know, financial part that we're kind of a little more hyper focused on the August one is. This would be the decision point. Does it financially make sense to take that gamble right now?
I, I will say, you know, sort of industry wide, um. The ma- major concert events, you know, major festivals. Um, things like that have all already said, we're not doing anything in twenty twenty. Uh, now granted, a lot of that is, it takes a year to plan, you know, things like Stampede. Or, you know, Coachella or Stagecoach, and we're nowhere near that size by any means. Um, but. As an industry, a lot of, you know, the concerts and the touring. Um, parties have said, we're not gonna do anything in twenty twenty. So. Take that for whatever it's worth.
But the artists um are still saying they would come?
So I haven't, I mean, I have, for our particular artists, you know, I haven't heard anything specific either way. Um, I think of, I think, you know, October's artist is a, is sort of where we're at in a wait and see. Um, type thing. Um, August's artist, you know, they, they still have other shows. That haven't been canceled yet again, a wait and see type thing. Um, but. I haven't heard either way. So, you know, I, I think it's, it could go either way depending. I haven't had any of them say, no, we're, we're. Ready to go, but I have, you know, their agents have been wanting us to announce um as, as soon as we can.
Because in reality, once we sign the contract, we're on the hook for that money. So they're gonna say, oh, yeah, we'll do it.
Right.
Okay, and then, um, I think, I think Les in one meeting had mentioned the. White t-shirts. Was the biggest concert that we had. What was the um door prize at that?
Yeah, so plain, plain white tees um in twenty eighteen was our, was our biggest.
It was laundry of some kind.
You were close. Um, that was our, our biggest show. Um, we had about six thousand people out here, um, but it was a free concert. So we didn't bring in anything um in terms of ticket sales for that because it was a free concert. Except for, I, I, I will have a caveat up to that, actually. We, we had free GA for that. So. The premium and the um patio, um, they had to pay for. So I think. I think we brought in about nine or ten thousand um with that, but. You know, the majority of. But, you know, the majority of the people who came were, um, didn't, didn't have to pay for entry, cause it was GA.
And then what's our, what would you say is our max capacity? Do we have one?
Um, so according to our architects and what we put in all of our contracts, it's ten thousand. Um, looking at when Plain White Tees was here with this about six, I think, um, staff is saying we're very comfortable in the five to six range and eight, I think would be pushing it. Um, from a, from a social distancing standpoint, um, definitely probably closer to five would be our max. Um, because, you know, we want everybody to stay in their own little areas and things like that. But, um, according to our architects, ten thousand people can fit in there. But I think, I think that would be pushing it in terms of people's comfort level. Um, and I don't know that people would, you know, be, I think they'd be a little close together at ten thousand. So about eight thousand, I think is what we, what they're saying.
There's no social distancing at six thousand would be.
I was at a venue Saturday night and social distancing was not even part of their thought process. People are ready to get out of the house. I have no question that we could sell the tickets. But I'm, uh, because people are tired, I'm tired, you know? Uh, but I can tell you, I've, I'm, I'm on, I'm continually working to get an outdoor venue open. And it's, it's, it's hard right now. They're not, and it's not the commissioners of Sedgwick County, it's the lawyer that is advising it's a bad idea. So I just putting that out there for us to, to evaluate. Butler County is much more lenient. There's no question. So it's kind of, we have to decide what we wanna do.
So can we say October, you know, and kind of, uh, think of that?
Sure, yeah.
I like that.
Can you, uh, hold on please? Can we put the, uh, take the deal down off the screen so I can see everybody? There you go. Cause this is group decision.
I, I have a couple of questions, I guess. Um, first, I, I would say we have an opportunity in that ours is an outdoor venue, very, very open. And a lot of the other ones that we're talking about are not.
Right.
Um, we also have the ability to filter people in at as many check-in points as we want and make sure that they're distanced that way. We could segment in a way and walk people to their place of seating if we even want. So again, that goes back to the, the question earlier of if there is a plan in place that is appropriate. And I think we probably could make it work. Another question I would have would be, can we on the ticket sale as well as maybe signage at the venue state? That this is a, that we understand that we're in, I don't know how to word it, but what I wanted to say is something the effect of they are signing their rights away to sue us if they ju- go to the event. I know that there's plenty of places you can go, uh, Worlds of Fun, for example, where when you buy your ticket, it absolutely says if you do something dumb or you're making a choice on this dangerous act, it's your responsibility. And I feel like there might be a way that we could word the ticket sales or the, the whatever in order to accomplish the same thing.
JT?
Yeah.
One thing.
Danny's looking all crazy there, what?
Well, your stories will tell you, says waivers are worth their weight in paper. So you can put that out there and it might make us feel better. If someone really wants to sue, they can, um, you don't have to have legitimate grounds to sue someone, so.
I mean, they'll hit Schlitterbonn.
Make grounds to win, so.
Right, but you still go through it. I mean, so I feel that that a threat of a lawsuit is a reason to or not a threat of a legitimate lawsuit is a reason to really consider.
Sure, that goes back to, uh, the, the, the question of liability. If there is a decision that comes down from somewhere with real authority that says, hey, if you do this, you are not covered by any kind of insurance. I mean, for me, that's a point of pause to say maybe, maybe not a good idea. Um, and then also, uh, along with pretty much everyone else, I, I don't think that August is smart, but I, I definitely think it would be smart to look at, uh, October if we're going to do it. And then the last thing on the, the contract, could we write into any contract because of what's going on right now that if it is canceled, then the, they don't get a hundred percent, maybe they get half. I'm talking about the artist. And at least try, they might say no, but I think I would like to try that.
Yeah, I mean, we can put, we could put pretty much whatever we want in the contracts, it's just a matter of if they approve it or not. Um, so.
Yeah, that was my question too, was could we add that to the, to the verbiage?
We talked about doing that too, or saying something like, you know, if we need to reschedule, um, for twenty twenty one, cause that, that's something too of we don't necessarily wanna outright cancel it. Um, we would, we would maybe wanna work to reschedule it for twenty twenty one. Um, and so, I mean, a lot of, a lot of artists are open, are being open to that, um, obviously given everything. Um.
What if we took the August one and also gave them the option of October, uh, but don't sign it until like July? Just three months ahead.
There is that marketing piece that the, the guys for August are kind of beating Katie up on, when are you gonna announce? If we're having a show in three months, we need to be promoting this show. And so waiting four weeks out isn't, that doesn't work very well with the promotion piece and the ticket sales piece to wait until that's, that's the problem. The time crunch is the problem with August.
Mm-hmm, and I, I would say from a, you know, pushing it back to October standpoint, we have Greater Andover Days the first weekend of October, um, and then we have our October concert the next weekend. And, you know, pushing any events after that really comes into a weather, um, scenario, you know, middle October through the rest of the year, we don't know if it's gonna be snowing, we don't know, it's gonna be freezing cold or anything like that. And so, um, when we initially decided pushing it to October, as staff sort of said, we, we don't wanna go past mid-October. Um, from a weather standpoint, you know, a certain point, everyone's gonna say, I'm not gonna come out, it's too cold for a concert. Um, or, you know, to be out and doing something all day or all night or something like that. So, I mean, it's definitely something we can consider. I don't think it's something that we're like, no, nothing after this date, but.
Yeah, the last, uh, Saturday in September or something, you know? Well, I guess just see what they say, you know, and, I mean, o- obviously August is not gonna work, so let's see, let's just see what they come back and say, and that, that, that they may say, you know, let's do it next year.
Would Cap Fed ever, you know, I don't know how our contract is with them, but would they ever have any way of canceling? Because they don't want their name, you know, associated with it kind of thing?
I don't know that they would have a way out as long as we have an event. Um, I would say, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of their brand as well. I mean, that was one of the things we kind of talked about is the newspaper headline, if the clusters at the Capital Federal Amphitheater in Andover, Kansas, who knows what gets reported more that it's owned by the city of Andover or it's the Cap Fed Amphitheater. So I definitely think they have, they're stakeholders, they're best, have a vested interest. The contract really reads that if an act of God, which I think it was really written more, if I think about this, to be like a tornado or a major weather event, a fire, or to take out the venue, um, that they wouldn't owe their annual contribution if we did not have a show for the entire year. Um, and so that's kind of where we're coming from with this. If we do a partial season, you know, I think it would be appropriate to tell them, we didn't bring you three concerts worth of people this year, so how, you know, how about we only, we give you credit towards next year for what you've already paid, or we give you credit for all but ten thousand dollars next year, or something like that. Um, but that's where that's coming from is if we did nothing. Um, there's not anything in there that talks about if there's a pandemic and we do a show anyway. I'm sure that contracts will change now after this.
A really good question, Homer.
Thanks Troy.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, there, there is language in there of like, you know, if we do something that is, you know, intentionally to, to disre- disrepute a bit, told that whatever that word, I don't know how to say that word. But, um, you know, to tarnish their reputation intentionally, they can get out of it. But obviously as a city, we're, we're not gonna be doing anything that's gonna, you know, that we don't think as a city would tarnish our reputation, that would be, um, something that I think Cap Fed would think is, you know, something they don't wanna be associated with.
I, you know, the, I think the thing in my head that I'm ro- you know, rolling with too is that one of our, I thought one of our goals maybe this year was to advance, um, the amphitheater and what it can do kind of thing. And it's gonna be really hard to, you know, take the whole year off and then re-market stuff next year. Um, but at the same time, I, I'm not like anybody else. I don't wanna lose a hundred and eight thousand. So, I, I don't know.
I think it all depends on whether or not they'll, uh, put that in the contract saying that if we have to cancel, you know, we can reschedule for next year.
Can JT word it that way that if, uh, you know, if we don't give them the option to reschedule in twenty twenty one, then, you know, we wouldn't be out that money? Because I, I think just like Mayor brought up too, come October, you're talking about another whole, you know, COVID on the, on the backend of it. You know, unless we have the cure like Troy said, you know? So I definitely don't wanna get somebody here, you know, on their bus or whatever it is, and then say, uh, you know, we can't have the concert, right? Or we'd have to move it over to the mayor's pool. Um, and have the concert in his backyard, which depending on the person might be awesome. But, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm really torn, but I, I'd almost say go both concerts.
Can I, can I make a statement?
No. Oh, sorry, was my mic on?
Yeah. One thing we've been looking at at eighty-one is, is making people, if you wanna come with your family, you gotta buy the tickets in advance. And if someone comes later and buys two tickets and say they're your family member, they cannot sit with you. So this is something I've been losing sleep over for a period of time. So that's one thing that we could do, Ben, we don't have stadium seating. That's one thing that, that's an option that we have is to say, hey, you get a set with the people that you bought the tickets with in advance. That way, one way to protect ourselves, would we necessarily police it? Probably not, but at least we would make an attempt to, to do so, you know what I mean? If, uh, that's just one thing I wanna put out there for everybody to think and, uh, think about.
I don't know if this, uh, sorry.
I'm ready to turn, I'm ready to turn Americans loose and let them be Americans. I'm just gonna.
Let's go racing!
So, um, you know it, man.
What, what, oh, sorry.
So there are, there are things we can do to protect the, the citizens if we do have concerts. So whatever we decide as a council, we decide it together. Thank you Troy, you're so. But, uh, but I'm just one man and I'm old and I, I just have an old mindset, so. And I think, unless is to.
Katie, Rick, this could be a question maybe for you guys. So let's say we hold it down to a thousand, because that's where you said that's kind of our break even. Is there a way to, what'd you say Jenny?
Well, that's getting it really close, but keep going.
Okay, twelve hundred? I mean, I'm just, could we, I mean, do we have enough room? I'm trying to visualize six thousand and seven thousand people. Could we comfortably with six feet distancing hold two thousand people? And limit the number of tickets sold?
So, Homer, the, the way that, uh, maximum number was arrived at by the architects was fifteen square feet per person. So imagine that, that's about a four by four box. If you, uh, if you wanted to ensure six feet, you'd have to have at least a six-foot box, that's thirty-six square feet. So you would cut your number down to, let's say, maybe four thousand, that technically you could meet that six-foot space.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I think there's some pinch points though, we're not thinking about. I gotta draw your memory to the restroom lines and what that, what those lines look like to the food court and to the lines getting into the, to the venue. And, um, we can have, so I think someone had mentioned we could have a bunch more entry points, but we have to have a bunch more people working if we're actually taking tickets. I mean, so every one of those entries has, um, Martin's Security folks, has volunteers and city staff. And so like, not saying we can't go draw the, up this logistics, but we're adding costs when we're doing things like that. And so that makes a need for more tickets.
My, my first thought would be no food, bring your own food, your own cooler, which we've done before. For many years, we did it that way. Um, and they just have twice as many toilets. I don't know, just a thought.
Can we charge them five bucks for a cooler?
I mean, we, we could, we can add whatever costs we want. I, I don't say that the, the diff- the, the only, well, not the only, but one of the challenges of allowing people to bring their own food and drink for this, for like August or, and October this year is retraining them again next year, that they can't do it is gonna be an issue. That's always been an issue. You know, when we opened the amphitheater in twenty eighteen and people, we, I mean, even last year, every concert we hear, well, last time I came, I could bring my own food and drink, so why can't I now? And, and it's been, that's been one of the big things that we've had to retrain people on. Um, and so, I mean, it, it's, we can do it. I'm not saying we can't. It's just, um, something that, you know, a lot of the feedback we get is we're not consistent in our messaging and it's different every show and all of that.
Shelby, you got a large rodent by you.
Yeah, he's not, he's not, if I push him away, he just comes back more annoyed though, next time, so.
See your husband anywhere?
Hey, Katie, I, I think the, uh, the food vendors and the, uh, and the beer cell people, I mean, that, I think they deserve to make some money as well. Um, so I, I, I wouldn't wanna push them out. And I, you know, we've only had one concert over, over, right at six thousand. Um, so no matter what, uh, that four-foot distance is gonna be very close or five-foot or six-foot. Uh, even if we have a three, four, five thousand, uh, people, so I, I wouldn't say limit because we're not gonna, we're not gonna be over that six thousand probably. Um, and I'd say the August concert, let's try to move it to September and have the October one as scheduled.
Yeah, I'd agree with an attempt to move it. If that's successful, then that's great. And if it's not, then that's maybe okay too, but definitely rolling the dice on the October one. Um, cause if that's canceled, at least we can, at least we can reasonably bear the expense of doing that.
Yep.
Katie, how can, Katie, how can we squeeze that into, to September? I mean, there's a lot of things going on, so how's that? I mean, what kind of stress is that gonna put on us as a, as a, as a team and a facility and all that?
So, I mean, from our standpoint, we don't really have much going on in September this year. Um, except we had some movies planned, um, and, um, I believe, no, we were pushing the movies into the August, um, August weekends we hadn't had planned. Um, the only thing is that Kansas State Fair is in September, maybe if, if they continue or don't. Um, again, that's out of our control, but I believe that's the first and second weekend of September. Um, so I would say we, we don't wanna do either of those weekends, um, because fair's much bigger than us and people are gonna go to the fair.
All right, let's come to.
And, and that's if, that's if the artist is even able or wants to do September.
Yeah, cause I mean, they, they do have other dates, um, so I'd have to look and see, um, and talk to their agent about that.
Yeah, I just think August would be like on a best effort basis, and if it doesn't pan out for a later date, that will work and seems reasonable. Pan out for a later date that will work and seems reasonable, then that's, then we'll just have to be okay with that one not happening.
All right, let's uh, let's try to make some kind of decision, please.
See if you can move it, if you can't, um, then it's okay, uh, move it to next year maybe. And then October, uh, let's, let's do the October one, no restrictions. Um, except for adding the caveat on, on the ticket.
Okay, and I am reserving the right to bring this back up based on what happens in the world between now and selling tickets.
Mike, you said no, no restrictions on the concert. So we wouldn't say anything about if it had to be canceled that if we couldn't honor a date in twenty twenty one or something like that?
No, like on um, how many people can come in the gate?
Oh, okay, okay.
And food and drinks and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think we're going to end up putting language um like that into.
Okay.
Both, both of the contracts, um, regardless.
I'm up for both, so. If, if one's fine, one's fine, I mean, I'm fine with one.
I'm okay with just one in October.
Yeah, it, either, either way, I like, I like Mike's idea. I feel like there's going to be a pretty significant amount of the population that's just not going to be comfortable. So this will be interesting to see if we're able to put on a concert, what happens, because I don't think. I don't know what the percentage is, but there is going to be a percentage that will not come that would have bought tickets, so. Again, we'll see, I guess.
Yep, sixty-three percent.
I think you're on the money, Homer.
Thank you.
We're uh, Tim Berry, may I ask your opinion, sir?
I, I, I do, I, I, I agree, I think the October one would probably be the best.
And Homer, where were you at, brother?
I'm gonna just do all of them, um, but I'll take one.
Well, I kind of need to know a four to two situation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm for uh, the one.
You just said two.
I'm for them, I'm for the, the Mike one, I'm for Mike's.
Try, try to move the Au- August one to September. Yeah, if it doesn't work, then, then we're fine with just the one in October.
Yeah, yes, Homer agrees.
That is Troy.
So does Barry.
Even though the August one, I think will bring more people. The uh, the. Will bring more people than the one in October.
So can we move the uh, August one and October and the October one to next year? Never mind, never mind.
A great look to just go and change your date.
Okay, so let's tend to, tend to. Yes, ma'am, sir, you know what I mean, Katie, handle it, you're the best, all right? And if.
Thanks, Katie.
If things change, uh, will change, and I appreciate you putting up with us. Uh, I know it was hectic, it was just like a, like a herding cats, but we got it done.
For sure, thank you guys.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm gonna sign off and go take care of my baby now.
All right, good plan.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Give it a hug for the mayor, please.
Yep.
All right.
Hi, Katie.
Bye.
Go on the Jack breaking.
All right, onward and upward, number four, Jake, Jake breaking. Uh. Thoughts on that in city limits?
I don't care.
I don't, why are we talking about this, really? It happen all the time, I mean, is it like?
You, you want to know the background of this, guys?
I live a half mile from Kellogg and I don't hear anything.
Seriously, I live right here and I hear it every morning about three o'clock in the morning. Um, I, as I was like Mr. Mayor.
In your house.
Well, they're new, um, I was traveling, doing my, my visits like what Mr. Mayor does, I, I walked uh, Green Valley. And I had about seven people bring this up of. At, you know, four, five o'clock in the morning, the semis were, you know, coming through town and happened to stop at Kellogg and End of the Road. And it's, it's the Jake brakes, the uh, you know, the, the engine braking. Um, so I wouldn't have even brought it up, except I've, I've had, you know, let's see, total of nine people, nine households. Asked me about this and, you know, and asked me to do something about this, so this is why I brought it up. This was, you know, something that people came to me about, so.
The headline is the six people actually spoke to you.
That, that, that is, that is the tru- that is the trick right there.
But in, in, in Tim's defense, whi- which I will not do again in the next four years. Uh, I also hea- hear it and it's, it's even more noticeable now that we don't have. Uh, everybody and your brother out driving around.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, it doesn't hurt to, uh, you know, a lot of cities have it, so it doesn't hurt to, to uh. Uh, ha- have that in place. And, and how hard uh, Chief Keller and his, his men want to enforce it is a, is a whole nother thing, but. Signage and, and, and ordinance, what's it hurting, you know?
Are, are we talking about on Kellogg?
It would be within the city limits.
Ability to tell K dot this. I mean, it's not our street.
Well, it does say Augusta in here, but I'm pretty sure Augusta has one. Um, on the east side of fifty-four, it says no.
They do.
I see them all over Kansas, all right.
I mean, if you want to put a sign up, then put a sign up, but I don't think we need to do an ordinance on. For people, you know, putting their brakes on, coming in through town.
That, that's where I'm at, just put a sign up, no, no ordinance.
I would agree with that, it's going to be so, it's, it's going to be pretty much non-existent to be able to enforce that and. I just, I think signage is.
You know, I, I have to disagree with that, I've been pulled over several times when I did use my Jake brake. Going through Overland Park by Kansas Highway Patrol. And I've received probably four warnings for that, um, so it is enforceable.
Well, I've never even heard of that before until tonight.
Well, it sounds like we need to hire another policeman, uh, just to be able to do that.
But, I mean, it is state trooper, I'm not saying Chiefs, you know, PD's going to be doing it, but it is, I mean, it, it is an issue.
It's very common, it's a very common uh, place to see the signs. If you're not Jake breaking and driving the semi, you don't look for it, but mind you. If you pass ordinance, then you'll have to write a ticket to every single Harley Davidson coming through town, because that's the way you drive. That's, that's the way you, that's the way you do it, every motorcycle, you know, uh, isn't that correct, Les Mangus?
Yeah, so. You know, Greg is, I think on the same path with me, let's not do it.
Pardon me?
Just, just put a sign up and that's it.
Okay, and me and Jenny, Jenny and I, I should say, I'll try to speak correctly once in a while. Have talked about it, we need to run it by um.
JT?
JT, thank you, Homer. And see if we can legally put the signs up without having ordinance, it's, it's, I know it sounds ridiculous, but, you know. We have ridiculous laws in the United States.
Well, no, I think it's exactly right, I mean, what does that sign say? Because typically those signs say enforceable by ordinance number, blah, blah, blah. So, I mean, we can say like, please don't use your Jake brakes. We'd say something more forceful than that, but the point being. There is, we can't say enforceable by law, or we can't say Jake brakes illegal if you don't make them illegal.
How do you, I, I guess my thing to JT or I, maybe Tim, you, Ronnie, I'm sorry, Mayor Price. Um, how, Jake breaking, isn't that just using the clutch to stop?
No, it is, it's, it's a separate thing on, on the truck. That you flip on or off, and what it does is it just adds. I, I don't know the mechanical aspects of it, but it basically uh, idles, idles it down or it, it's not clutching or, or anything like that.
Downshifting so you don't have to use your brakes.
Correct.
And, and like I say, I do it on my Harley because, so I don't hit my brakes, I'll downshift and, and the truckers do it, the reason they do it is. It's easier to uh, it's easier to uh, not stop all the way. They start slowing down earlier because it's easier to get moving.
I, I get it, I just.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't know there was a term for that, I would think anyone with, anyone with a clutch is doing that. Because it's less wear on your brakes.
Right, I see intention.
So how are you going to enforce it on an eighteen wheeler and not enforce it on the, the Mustangs on a hundred and fifty ninth?
So there's. Don't say that.
Is a, working on. Facility that's installed and it's not on the motorcycle, it's not on the Mustang. It's only on diesel engines.
Yeah.
Some have it, some don't.
And it's usually like the cattle trucks.
He's the, Chief's fire trucks have engine brakes.
Yeah.
But they're routed into the mufflers, it's these outlaws who have the straight exhaust that make all the noise.
Uh, I have a question, Chief Keller, I don't know if this is something you might be able to answer for me. I would imagine that this would kind of present itself to the police department and just kind of noise complaints about loud vehicles. Is, do you know if that's just something that's very commonly reported to you guys? Is this a, a wider issue in the city in general, or maybe is it just some neighborhoods have problem? Um, problem residents that have loud vehicles.
Okay, are, are you referring to these semi trucks coming down fifty-four or just general?
I would just say general, like what this would probably be is somebody just calling saying there's. Loud exhaust. Yeah, right.
But we do not get those very often, nor have we received very many in the last. Fourteen years have we received very many of the complaints about the Jake breaking either. They got a couple of Cajuns over the last however many years. It just, it just hasn't been. Called in very much.
Okay, thank you.
So how, how is it enforced then, Tim? I mean.
Well, mostly it's just a sign that, you know, it says uh, no Jake brakes, ordinance number blah, 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 and most truckers will follow that. I mean, but depends on how, you know, if you have a uh, uh, state trooper there that, you know, is sitting there and just uh, watching the road. You know, like I, like he did, I, you know, you just get pulled over and, and, you know, you get a nice little warning.
Mr. Barry, I'm not sure how that works because state troopers cannot enforce our city ordinances. They'd have to, it'd have to be off of a state statute, they don't have the authority to, to enforce city ordinances, only state statutes. I see towns out on four hundred that have maybe a few or three hundred people in town if that. And they have no Jake breaking signs, so I mean, it's not uncommon. It's just a matter of if we want to do it or not, it's not uncommon at all, I promise you that.
Yeah, it, it's everywhere, I mean, it's not just here, it's in South Dakota and everywhere else.
To me, it just doesn't sound like an overarching, yeah, to me, it just doesn't sound like an overarching problem in general in the community, just based on. Um, the lack of complaints in general, it seems like maybe that, maybe people. Just in a specific area maybe having trouble with that.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not for it.
Right.
I think that's four.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I don't want to do an ordinance, so I guess I'm not for it either.
I'm going to go ahead and bring this up, I'm not prepared and you don't have the documents in front of you, but I think it is right in the vein of this conversation. So I don't want to waste your time at a future workshop. Um, we've had one um, family complain multiple times about noise at their neighbor's home. And they would like us to look at our noise ordinance, um, I've actually had the police department, um, I asked them to go. Test the sound of um, specifically wind chimes, which is what is aggravating the complaining neighbor. And they were right with, and Chief speak up if I'm misspeaking, but they were right at or right below decibel level our noise ordinance requires. Um, we had them go to Ace Hardware and test them in an experimental and controlled environment, same thing. They were maybe five over, but real close. Um, I've explained to the gentleman that generally we don't change law because one or two people don't like something, much like Shelby's really saying here. So I feel like I'm going to have the exact same conversation with you guys here in a few months and I might be able to get my answer um, right now. Um. Chief can speak to how, you know, frequently people call in about noise complaints on their neighbors, but. I feel like the tone I'm getting is people aren't real interested in revisiting the noise ordinance to make it more restrictive. Um, and I'll turn it to Chief Keller to talk about the complaints they get so far.
Jenny, I, I'm sorry, but right at the time you said wind chimes, I got booted off and I just got back on. Um, so I missed most of that, I will tell you that these were some, these were some huge wind chimes. And they were very loud, but I missed all of what you said and I'm sorry for that.
No, you're fine, I just said that I'm kind of going off uh, um, off script here in that we weren't really going to talk about this for a few months. But that we have this one family that's pretty unhappy with their neighbor's chimes, you guys did an experiment, we, they were within about. They were under the decibel level by maybe five onsite, the gentleman complained the wind wasn't blowing hard enough. So the police went to Ace Hardware and tested them and they were five over or right at the decibel allowance. And so he is now proposing that perhaps our win, our noise ordinance should be more strict, and so, so far my response has been. We don't really change the law because a couple people don't like the law, we need more um, feedback on the matter. And then I was going to have you, Chief Keller, share in general how frequently you hear noise complaints. Um, if this is a typical call.
We don't get them very often, I, I will tell you, I went back and this specific neighbor. Um, was complaining on a uh, specific neighbor. And I went back and checked for the last, I don't know how many years, went back as far as we had records. Uh, that we had not received, we've only received one noise complaint and it was by this neighbor. Um, we hadn't received any other complaints from the other neighbors in that area. Um, so, a- and I'm typical, we don't receive noise complaints all that often. Uh, we have a meter, we now have a new meter, uh, higher quality that uh, we get. In the wind, um, but we just don't use it that often. Uh, our noise ordinance is a little difficult because it's so many decibels, repeating so many times a minute. It's difficult for the officers to interpret and use, uh, but really. We probably. I, I remember one noise complaint we had that we actually remedied, came from the post office in the early morning hours. Uh, loading and unloading their trucks, uh, and we ended up working with them and the neighbors and, and got that remedied. Probably the only biggest complaints we get is either uh, fireworks or concerts. Just saying. Did you uh, did you happen to get a phone call, I like, like about Friday evening, it was after dark uh, in my neighborhood about a gunshot? Seriously, there was a. You know, I don't, I know, I know in the last week, we've had a couple different calls, I don't remember specifically where. Um, that officer or someone heard what they thought was a gunshot. Yeah, one in my neighborhood, man, it scared me death, but uh, and then, and then there is a, there is a, a loud noise uh. Uh, starts up about eight o'clock every morning while I'm trying to enjoy my coffee at the Rusted Rooster. Uh, I don't know.
Fire trucks.
What?
Fire trucks.
Oh, 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 is that? I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty sure it's a, oh, never mind. I love my.
Different than the trash truck at six AM, you know, pulling trash out of the Walgreens and the Sherwin-Williams.
All right, has anybody got anything they'd like to share or not share or? Say something mean to me like you usually do or anything like that before we adjourn?
Is it?
Jenny, do you?
No interest in revising the noise ordinance at this time?
No.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing I wanted to bring up, just to make sure the. I, I know I've talked to several of the council members one-on-one about this and um. I believe I brought it up during a workshop maybe a few months ago. Uh, to kind of get the pulse of the council, but I wanted to make sure they're aware that tomorrow night on the agenda. We have a new, a revised policy for the police department. That will allow our officers to have facial hair and also allow certain tattoos. And the general consensus I got from everyone was that they were good with that, and I didn't want to think that we were trying to slide this under the table or anything, but. It's on your uh, agenda and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
I think it's a good change, kind of changes with the times.
And it's not just for the men, is it? No, you can, the women can have tattoos and beards too, if they can grow them.
Just check.
But, but it's, uh, I, I took some, um, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Carsaway, when I talked to her about it, uh, her concern, as long as they were neatly, uh, groomed and, and absolutely that our policy does, it allows facial hair, but no grizzly atoms. They'll have to be certain, uh, length and, uh, well trimmed. And then, uh, and maintain that way. And then the tattoos, we actually have a committee that will review all tattoos and if they don't meet the standards, then they wouldn't be allowed to wear them or have them exposed while on duty.
Can I have the teardrops?
No.
Okay.
No tattoos allowed on the face or neck or head, uh, none on the hands, except for one ring. I mean, it, it's a pretty solid, we worked on this for quite a while, uh, trying to get something that would open it and bring us up to the times as you indicated, but, but still be as professional as we can. Perfect. I like it. And I think, uh, uh, Chief Keller, I think, I thank you for the help you've been giving me in the last couple weeks. I appreciate it. I know some of it's, uh, uh, and I knew one of them specifically was nonsense, but, uh, I just wanted to follow up so I could tell them I followed up and, uh, I made the offer that you, uh, you, uh, uh, spoke to me about and, uh, obviously they didn't want to, uh, uh, endure the facts of the matter, if you will. So thank you. And, uh, Chief Chad, you've been doing a great job too. I appreciate it, man. You guys have been going through a lot with this, uh, COVID nonsense and everything else. Well, I'm sorry, COVID nineteen, I didn't mean to say nonsense, I just did. But, uh, it's been a, really the whole staff has been, man, it's new territory, you know, and, uh, I appreciate it, what everybody does, you know, we not always agree on everything. But, uh, we work together well and, and we will continue to. And Lance, the next time you're gonna have to turn the light on there, I can't see you.
Chief Keller, did you say the tattoo thing's on tomorrow's agenda?
It's on consent, Homer, Councilman Henry, so.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's easy to feed by those, that's why Chief thought maybe he should bring that up.
Troy, do you have any words of wisdom for us or?
Where are your tattoos?
You're muted, Troy.
I was saying my tattoos are back here, so you can't see them. No, no more words of wisdom. I just feel like having a plan as we talked, there it is. Um, yeah, I just think having a plan will allow us to achieve a lot of things so that we can do almost everything we want to do, but make sure that we, we've planned it well, so that's it.
All right. Homer?
I do not have a tattoo, that's my garage code.
I wanted to know if you had anything to say. I don't care about your.
No, I'm good. I'm, I appreciate all of you, I, definitely the staff, um, for doing such a great job with the agendas and the budget and um, all the stuff that, for the most part, people in the community sometimes take for granted. Uh, so I just appreciate all you guys do and thank you, um, for doing what you do because sometimes it just, um, you know, it, just, just saying it helps, so I hope that helps you in some way. I love everybody here, so.
Mikey, got anything, buddy?
Uh, I'm hungry.
Me too.
No, Homer said it well.
Wendy's is open now.
Yeah, that's right.
And Rick, by the way, uh, your guys are doing a tremendous job on the ditch out in our neighborhood, man. I stopped and let them know. I know one of our neighbors said something to them, but I, I tried to, I went around educating them that there's a plan in place. And, uh, I really enjoyed just talking to the guys, but they do, they are very conscientious of what they do and, you know, I'm kinda partial to those folks cuz I, I was one of them, you know what I mean? So let them know, I, I appreciate it.
I will do so, thank you.
Staff, you have anything you'd like to enlighten us with? All right, uh, uh, do we need a motion to adjourn or do I just shut it off? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I motioned to adjourn. I moved to adjourn. Homer moves to adjourn, sorry. Thanks, Mike.
Did Mike second?
Yes.
Good night.
Night, guys.